With that, we're going to move on. And again, as I talked about moving an item, so we're going to go to item six, Conduct of Business, item B, City Clerk.
Item six, B, Adopt Resolution Canceling the Previously Approved Water and Wastewater Rate Increase for Fiscal Year 2021-22.
Thank you. Director Tan.
Sorry about that, little technical difficulties there. Good afternoon, actually, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council, Jimmy Tan, Public Works Director. I have a brief presentation on this topic tonight. The objective of the item in front of you tonight is to adopt resolution canceling the previously approved water and wastewater rate increase for fiscal year 2021 to 2022. And this item is being brought tonight because staff was directed by City Council during the January 12 meeting to evaluate whether the water and wastewater rates can be canceled for the fiscal year 2021-22. The agenda is as follows. I'll provide a brief background on the water and wastewater rates and the factors for the rate increase. Then I'll discuss the capital improvement program and project status. I'll talk about the water and wastewater funds and the utilities rates comparison. And I'll go over the alternatives and lastly, the staff's recommendations. So back in 2016, the City Council awarded a contract to Border Wells Associates to evaluate the city's water and wastewater rates. The rate evaluation was ensure that there is necessary revenue to cover the projected operations and maintenance costs for the city's water and wastewater utilities and continuation of the ongoing program for investment in improving and replacing the city's aging and deteriorating water and wastewater infrastructure. So the rate study was completed in 2017 and included adjustments of rates for five years, starting from fiscal year 1718 to fiscal year 2122. So through the discussions with the City Council Utilities Subcommittee, the rates were limited to 5% per year increase for both water and wastewater rates. So what are some of the factors for the water and wastewater rates increase? Well, the rate included projected increases in cost for the purchased water from San Francisco Public Utilities Commission to pay for their upgrades to their infrastructure as part of their seismic improvement program. The existing sewer costs includes ongoing treatment costs for their jointly owned San Francisco San Bruno Water Quality Control Plant. And there's also costs for complying with the San Francisco Baykeeper and Regional Quality Board Settlement Agreements. While these factors and other operating costs are important in determining rates, the most significant factor impacting both water and wastewater rates is the replacement of our aging infrastructure. The average age of the infrastructure for both systems over 60 years old. Some of the sections in the city have pipelines over 100 years old. Because of the need to replace the infrastructure and address the certain capacity deficiency, the city has an aggressive capital improvement program to replace the both water and sewer system over the next two decades. So the Water Master Plan was completed in 2012, and it provided improvements, recommendations for the water distribution based on age, condition, and capacity. And all of those recommended improvements totaled $240.3 million approximately. And then the Sewer Master Plan was completed in 2014, and the staff has been prioritizing the work plan to complete the wastewater pipeline capacity and pump stations improvement projects. And those projects, improvements, the recommended improvements in the Sewer Master Plan is approximately $133.5 million. So in order to assess the rates required for the fiscal years 2017 to 2018 through the 2122 cycle, the rate study included several projects from both the water and wastewater master plants. So these are some of the water projects that were identified to be completed within the five-year period as part of the rate study. The projects were recommended improvements from the Water Master Plan. So how have we performed with the list of projects that we proposed to complete within the five years? So as you can see, majority of the projects have either been completed or has commenced design. Five projects have already been completed. Four projects have already started the design phase. And one project is currently under construction, and one has yet to start. And here's the list of wastewater projects that were identified to be completed within the five-year period. Similar to the water projects, majority of the projects have been completed or has commenced the design. Construction of eight projects have been completed. One is under construction. Three projects have commenced design. And as previously mentioned, the most significant factor for raising the water and wastewater rates is due to the much-needed improvements of our aging infrastructure. So as you can see from the list of projects within the last five years, we have completed many water and wastewater projects and have utilized the money collected through these rates and to rebuild our infrastructure to last another 100 years. So during a council meeting on January 12, the council directed staff to evaluate whether the water and wastewater rates can be postponed for fiscal year 2122. Staff viewed the fund balances and the projected water and wastewater fund balances through the end of next fiscal year, assuming no rate increases. The fund balances shows healthy reserve above the reserve targets for both funds. And the city can pursue canceling a rate increase for fiscal year 2122 without jeopardizing a capital project of funding. So here's a table that shows information on fund balances, reserve targets, and the balance above the reserve targets. The total shown for the projected ending fund balance, which includes revenues, total operating expenses, and expenses for capital improvement program projects at the end of fiscal year 2122, projected that the water fund would have a balance of $13.4 million and a wastewater of $17.1 million. The reserve target is shown to be about $7.2 million for water and $7.5 million for wastewater. And the reserve targets includes these emergency capital reserve and budget for operating the debt services. And the reserve are needed to operate the water sewer enterprise for operating emergency on fruition cost. So the projected ending balance for fiscal year 2122 shows a healthy balance for both water and wastewater fund. And even with the reduction in the reserves target, there is still a balance above the reserve target that's shown there on this slide. So should the rates remain the same? Staff requested assistance from a rate consultant to determine the rates in comparison with other agencies. And this graph is similar to what you just saw from the city manager's presentation earlier. The water rates includes the fixed, as well as the water consumption charges. The fixed charge covers a portion of the city's fixed costs, which includes administration, debt service, system maintenance, and equipment. Fixed costs only covers a relatively small portion of the fixed expense. So water quantity charges are billed on a near water use basis as well. And this chart shows that the city's water rates are in the middle range in comparison to other regional agencies. And San Bruno's water rate is equivalent to the average for all comparable agencies and only about $6.88 higher than the median. Here's a similar slide that you saw from the city manager's presentation earlier as well for the sewer rates comparison. And similar to the sewer, similar to water, the sewer rates have both the fixed and usage charges as well. And this chart shows that the city's sewer rates are in the middle range in comparison to other regional agencies. And San Bruno's sewer rate is equivalent to the average for all comparable agency and only $3 higher than the median. And this slide shows a comparison of rates for combined monthly water and sewer bill for a single-family residence. The average rate among all the agencies approximately $182.35, whereas the median is $166.61. And then as shown, the San Bruno's combined bill is equivalent to the average for all comparable agencies as well, and only about $15 higher than the median. So as for the alternatives, there are two. Do not cancel the previously approved rate increase for water and wastewater for fiscal year 2122, or defer the fiscal year 2122 rate increase until fiscal year 2223. But a rate study will commence in late 21, late 2021 to look at the rates and the reserve for the next five years beyond 2122. So with healthy fund balances through fiscal year 2122, staff is recommending to adopt the resolution canceling the previously approved water and wastewater rates increase for fiscal year 2122. So this concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions. And we do have our consultants available to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you for the report, Director Tan. And as a reminder, as the director said, this was at our January 12 meeting, that when we had staff brought us a document, one of the alternatives that they recommended we could defer or what have you to the 2122 water sewer. As I spoke, and then every council member subsequent to me spoke, we gave direction, a little bit for us to get that resolution done. But then we also gave direction to staff to bring this back to us based on one of the alternatives that they had offered, that I believe we all were in consensus for it to come back. So with that, my colleagues, questions, comments? Or I should guess to say questions, why we have everybody here? There we go. Just waiting for someone. Thank you for breaking the ice. Councilmember Mason.
Hey, thank you. Thanks, Director Tan. I had asked in the last round of questions just how long the increases have been going on? And I can't remember if this next year would be the last year. So if we cancel this year, would 2022 be the last year of the last five-year increases?
That's correct. The last year of the five-year is the fiscal year 2122.
Okay. And then how long have we been having increases in San Bruno?
This was the five-years rate increase. Previous to that, there was another rate increase started in 2012.
And then I saw an article that also talked about a rate increase in 2009. Is that, do you know if that's right?
Maybe the city manager, or Alex Henner, will be able to answer that. I wasn't here during that time, so won't be able to answer that.
Sure. This is Alex Henner, who's the financial consultant that worked with the city on the last two rate studies, water and sewer. And the city's done a good job. This is going back, I mean, the rate increases that the city's been doing has been more of an ongoing lower gradual rate increases year after year. So at least, I mean, I don't have the history going back, but I see rate increases going back at least until 2008, '09 for some data that I'm looking at. But that's kind of been the philosophy of the city and a lot of agencies out there is rather than try to do no rate increases for a few years and have a big rate spike, kind of the slow gradual increase to keep rates in line with the cost of service. And the city's done a good job with that. So it's put you in a position now where because of these rate increases, you can afford to defer or cancel the next rate increase and then kind of reevaluate for the future.
And Mr. Handler, so when cities do these increases, is there a point in time where you say this is good for another 100 years? We no longer would recommend these increases? I mean, at what point is that recommended?
Yeah, that's a good question. I'll be honest, from my side, I've been in the field for about 20 years. I've worked for more than 150 agencies. And honestly, the rate increases can stop when the costs stop increasing. And as Jimmy mentioned, you've got increasing wholesale water rates. They're projected to keep on increasing over the next decade. You've got increasing costs for whether it's insurance, electricity, everything like that. So the goal is, I think, more management, to try to keep the rates just gradually moving in line with the cost of service. And I think that's been kind of the goal of the city. There's has been more of a ramp up over the last five to 10 years to increase funding for the capital improvements and addressing the needs of aging infrastructure. It's not just San Bruno. This is pretty much every city on the peninsula who's been dealing with this in recent times. So the hope is, once you get your rates up to kind of the, probably not that much different from where they are now, where they're kind of funding the ongoing cost of service and capital needs, that it's really just inflationary rate increases needed going forward. And if you think about it, your rate increases over the last few years have been 5%. For water and sewer, that's not a lot higher than what inflation is for most water and sewer agencies. So I don't know if there ever is an end, but the goal is you look long, every five years or so, you kind of look long-term and reset course with gradual increases. And it's more long-term rate management from my perspective. And sorry for the long-winded answer.
Yeah, no, it's okay. At some point, though, does it become less about replacement and more about maintenance? So maybe instead of a 5% increase, you see a 2% increase?
Yes, I think you're correct about that. Because the city right now has been engaging in kind of a system replacement and upgrade just through the age of the system. A lot of pipelines, as Jimmy mentioned, 100 years old, 80 years old. So after that process is done, you're going to have a lot of pipelines that are built with new materials that probably have lifespans of 100 years or so. I'm just, I'm not an engineer, but I'm just guessing. So I think it'll be more, the replacement needs will go away, and it'll be more maintenance and stuff. And I think the level of increases will be less in the future after this program's complete. And doing this program, you're also, I think, reducing your maintenance costs. Because with a lot of old facilities, there's more leaks, there's more problems, emergency repairs. And as the system is replaced and the highest priority needs are taken care of, it helps keep the maintenance costs down. So I think the city's doing a good job trying to proactively address these needs. And then the rates are kind of the financial stewardship that supports that.
Thank you. And Alex, I'm not sure if it was you, but I did see the last meeting, I want to say in 2017, when I believe it was your firm that gave the report. So this seems like it's in line with the report given back then in the recommendation. I also wanted to thank Director Tan, because I've been asking for updates on the plans. We do pay as a city a significant amount of money for the plans that we need, and they give us our recommendations. And so in particular, slides seven and eight, I think, really show that about 85% of the recommendations have been completed within the five years. And I think that as a council member, as a newer council member, it is really nice to see the progress, because we hear a lot from the public, where's our money going? And this is something that's not visual. You can't see it. And it's really important that we see that our money is actually being spent on plans that we're putting into action. So thank you, Director Tan, for doing that for me and for the whole council.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Well, this is the right time to take a pause in raising our water and our sewer rates. So I'm definitely in favor of that. I wanted to answer a question that was asked earlier. There were five years of approximately 10% rate increases in water and sewer. The need to spend that type of money was driven by a long term of deferred maintenance and a lawsuit that pretty much told the city from Baykeeper, you need to start doing this. And in order to do that, you need the money. In order to get the money, you need to raise your rates. With that deferred maintenance, San Bruno's an old city, and a lot of their pipes, they're worn out, they're leaking. When I worked here, I know our water department was out repeatedly fixing leaks just down a street over and over and over again. And that's what happens when you have old pipes. So we were legally required to catch up and to raise the money to fix the problems that we have. They're not going to go away. Things have a certain lifespan. And we're looking at, and we have implemented using PVC pipe, which lasts longer than cast iron pipe, or ductile iron pipe. So inflation is going to be with this, and costs will continue to go up. But we have the data that shows that we don't need this increase right now. And it was the right time to do it. And coincidentally, we have another need in our stormwater, which is pretty much going to balance out the cost of the amount of money that we would be paying for in our increase for water and sewer. We can, as ratepayers, put that money into fixing our stormwater system that, over again, once again, it's deferred maintenance. So we weren't taking care of the system as a city. It's like if you have a car, and if you don't maintain your car, at one point, it's going to start breaking down, and you need to buy a new car. And that's pretty much what we had to do with our water and sewer systems, and now we're seeing our stormwater system. So as I said earlier, the answers to our water rate history increases is complicated. Remember, I was on the last rate study, and we were able to reduce the increase from 10% down to 5% by the usage of bonds as well, so that we could spread those costs over time. So that's really important to remember. And it's nice to see that we're able to take a pause. And we will reevaluate our rates based on our growth that will be coming in the future. And that's as we learned today in 2021 late. So thank you for this report. It will be interesting still to come as we continue to do more work. And we have one item in consent that I'd like to talk about. So I'll wait until then to talk more about it. So thank you.
Are there questions or comments from council? No? Everybody moved. Oh, Councilmember Salazar.
I was just going to say that I'm still in favor of deferring this increase. Definitely appreciate staff's analysis into this and confirming that it is something that we can do comfortably. I know our finances are still fragile, and so I definitely don't want to jump into making a decision that would have ripple effects or any kind of negative consequences. And so it is reassuring, and I know that we've been dealing with increases for a long time. Prices have increased dramatically over the past decade. It is good to, again, share with the public why those rates have gone up and where that money is going. It's good to know that we are making some progress on those things. And I just want to leave it at that, that I realize that we're going to have to study this again, and depending on where we are and what's still left to be done, and the bonds that the vice mayor mentioned still need to be paid, we'll be paying on those for a while. And so I'm hoping this doesn't set us too far back. One of the reasons for the rates increasing so quickly was that we did, the city allowed itself to fall into sort of a really deep hole of deferred maintenance that was very expensive, and it took a lot to get us out of there. We're really on a good track right now, and I want to make sure that we don't do anything to derail that progress. So those are my comments.
I see, Councilman Hamilton, you haven't had an opportunity, so please go ahead.
So I'm absolutely in favor of pausing the increases. And one suggestion that I may have is, obviously, we hear from the public, and not everybody knows where this money is going. And I echo Councilmember Mason's comment about, it's wonderful to see, we put the plan in place, we're completing all of these projects, but the public largely doesn't know that this is happening. And I think we should try to address that. And I don't want to go spend a bunch of money in order to do that, but just through social media, those types of channels, to get the word out when these projects are completed. Because a few of the projects, I got a preview of the presentation a couple of weeks ago during my onboarding with Director Tan. A few of these projects, I understand, came in significantly under budget, this huge win. And that's able to contribute to our ability to be able to forego this last scheduled increase. And that's information that the public needs to know in order to understand where their money is going. So I would recommend that we try to spend just a little bit of effort to report out via social media and other channels when we complete these projects and have these wins.
Okay. And one thing I will say is people, businesses especially on San Antonio Avenue, they appreciate the depth of what was being replaced and done, because they would come to work and they would see it daily. But at the same time, what I would get from folks is, God, that street really looks great. It's been paved. But everything underneath, it's brand new, it's really assisted. As Vice Mayor said, it was the regional board that initiated a lot of that because of the SSOs. Baykeepers join them because they follow agencies around to get special little projects for other things. But yes, I think, as one of our callers said, what is the money really going for? I don't see it. But once it's all done, gets paved, you have a nice street on top, but really, no one has the gravity of what really has transpired down below. So anyway, but yes. And Councilman Mason, then we're going to go to our city manager.
Oh, just quickly, I don't think I said it. I of course support the cancellation of the fees. Thank you.
Wow, it just looks like we haven't even taken a vote yet. I don't even know if we need to. But city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to amplify a few points that council members made and connect them to data that was in Director Tan's presentation. So absolutely, the City Council asked us to look into this matter as we were talking about a stormwater, a potential stormwater 218 process. And the increase in stormwater is roughly equivalent to what the total combined savings would be for delaying or canceling these rate increases. And so that is why this item is for you tonight. In addition, connecting to what Councilmember Salazar said, absolutely, we looked at the enterprise and where we sit now in our capital improvement program. The analysis is that we will not be hurting our financial solvency in these two enterprises to delay the rate increase or cancel the rate increase. That does not mean that subsequent rate increases will not be needed when we do our subsequent studies. One of the things we know is that as we deplete that accumulated balance in the fund balance with those capital improvement projects, we will actually approach and potentially even come under those reserve targets now. We have, in some of those funds, more than $10 million over the reserve target accumulated because we have saved money for capital improvement projects that are active, in design, and to start soon. And so that money is allocated, but we will spend it down. But when we take a snapshot today of the enterprise, we can cancel the rate increases absolutely and not hurt the enterprise. And so I just wanted to amplify that point.
Thank you for that clarification. I think that's important, too. When we do the required by law, the Prop 218, and it goes out, and rates are increased or the voters make decisions, the council, it can go up to but may not exceed. But it also gives the council the ability to review and lessen, or in this case, defer or suspend, and it gives us that latitude to do so. The important thing for me is that we are not going to hurt the capital or the funds that we have in the enterprise, and that to me is what is most critical. Good thing is, is that it comes when we are having some challenging times, everybody is. So I think we're all feeling that is a good thing. And again, Director Tan was indicated earlier by Councilwoman Mason. Kudos to you, and kudos to your department and the work that you've done. Councilmember Hamilton said, having things come under budget needs to be applauded. Having the work that's been done, having a plan that's been there for five years, and it has systematically been having progress, and you've been achieving that work product is appreciated, and thank you to you and your team. With that, colleagues, I'm
With that, uh, colleagues, I'm not sure who might want to, but this is.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, oh geez, Vice Mayor Medina, we'll quit on.
Yes, I'd like to ma- I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution cancelling the water and sewer rate increases for fiscal year twenty one, twenty two.
Okay, Medina Salazar, uh, motion second. Roll call city clerk.
Did, I'm sorry, did, did, were there, was there public comment on this?
Oh, you know what? No, there has not been. I, I, maybe somebody doesn't like what we're doing. Is there a, thank you though, Councilmember Hamilton.
Never know.
I, I've been checking continuously as we've been speaking. There has been none thus far. Still seeing no hands. We're going to go back to the roll call for the motion, uh, the motion and the second.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
And Mayor Rico Medina.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Councilman Hamilton. Just as a reminder, never know. My, my eyes could be on a different panel. Okay, with that, we are going to move um back to consent, right? So item five, uh, consent call. All items are considered routine or implement an earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless um, unless requested. So for myself, um. We're going to need on item G, I'm going to need to um read a statement. And then um, before we open it up um to the public. So. Right now, are there other items that are to be removed for a separate vote? And then I'm going to ask for items. Just need commentary or wanting me. Um, first, anything to be removed for a separate vote, separate vote. I'm seeing no head. Thank you, uh, Vice Mayor. Councilman, okay, good. Everybody's going no. Is there any items for um. For further, you know, dialogue or a question? Vice Mayor.
Um, item E, please. E as in Edward.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Hamilton.
Uh, item D, just a very minor correction for the minutes.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Mason.
I think same D as in dog and E as in Edward, so I'm good.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so um, I'm going to take them in order if that is okay, folks, just so we keep in the system. So let's go to first on consent, item D. Item D is approve the regular minute meetings for the special and regular minutes of January fourth, twenty sixth and twenty ninth, twenty twenty one. Councilmember Hamilton.
So just a minor correction on item six B, uh, where we adopted the resolution for the um fire apparatus. Um, it shows that I made a, that I made the motion, but it doesn't show that anybody seconded it. So just need to add that in.
That would, that would be important because the fire chief would probably be very disappointed if all of a sudden nothing was ordered, huh?
Got to make sure that we get those trucks. Oh, yeah.
Yes, I will. Thank you. I'll add that in.
Thanks. Uh, Councilman Mason.
Yeah, so um, Councilmember Hamilton's was one. And then I also um wanted to ask that. Um, this is more of a, a general consideration, but in this one, because the arena was such a lively topic. Um, to include the, for those residents who offered where they live, to include the city of residents in the minutes. Um, and then for, and this was for the minutes of January twenty sixth, twenty twenty one. And then the other area that I had a comment on was to change the area around the city net services. The language right now, um. Hold on, I actually, this. So the language right now just reads that the city manager had expressed that the city net services, um, that there were no city net service related expenses in the foreseeable future. Uh, and I'd like to add um that it didn't mean that they could not be increased as the year progressed and the networks negotiated their rates with the city. Which is what the city manager said during the meeting. Um, so I just think it needs to reflect the entire statement that the city manager made.
Yeah, not, not knowing that I haven't gone back to look because I had no idea. And so, uh, the city manager maybe remember, I don't remember verbatim, but you probably have gone back and checked. But Vice Mayor Medina, your hand is up, sir.
Sorry, that was um for item um E.
Okay. Um, okay. So um, is everybody clear on, on that? Staff, we're good? Okay.